You are. Good evening, everyone. We have a very large crowd this evening. I'm calling the April 21 city council meeting to order. Just as a reminder for everybody who is here with us, we do have a remote aspect to our meeting as well. Members of staff, members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. And the first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite all of those that would like to join, please stand with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a large number of folks with us tonight. Although our agenda items are few, we have a lot of special events and special proclamations. So, thank you all for taking the time to come and join us tonight. The first item under Special Businesses is a very sad one. We're doing, going to do a moment of silence for State Senator Bill Ramos, who unexpectedly passed away this weekend. We learned of his passing. He was also a former city council colleague and a friend to many of those in the room and many in this community. We will be coordinating with Bill's family on a more formal tribute at a future council meeting where we can properly recognize Bill's many contributions to our community. Tonight, I'd like to ask that the city council and the audience members present take a moment of silence to honor Bill. Thank you very much. The next item is ID 1877, and we are going to be celebrating and talking about one of our previous mayors, Mayor A.J. Culver. And I think what I'd like to do is move over to the dais. We have several speakers with us this evening who would like to come and talk about Mayor Culver, so we'll do it from the dais over there. Good evening and welcome all. I'm Mayor Polly, current mayor of the city of Issaquah. And I wanted to talk about a public servant who served this community far and wide in many, many, many ways, Mayor, Mr. Culver. Mr. Culver had many roles. He was the head of the Municipal League of King County. He was a trustee of Harborview Medical Center. And he was Chair of the Elections Oversight Committee. He was also Chair of the King County Board of Boundary Review and an Issaquah City Council member from 1972 to 1979. We are very pleased tonight that his family has joined us. We have Stacy, his daughter, and her partner Mark. We have Holly, another daughter, and her partner Duane. And we have his granddaughter Hannah and her partner Raven. And I want to thank you all for joining. We're just so glad that you could be here today and hear about your father and grandfather and the wonderful, the wonderful things that he has done for our community. According to his granddaughter Madison, his favorite accomplishment ever was being the mayor of Issaquah. He served as the mayor from 1982 to 1989. And as mayor, he said he felt that he could actually make a difference. He truly did make a difference in his involvement in many important city projects, including things like the Skyport, which I'm guessing 90% of the people in this room do not even know what I'm talking about. I will go a little bit into the Skyport, but also pedestrian park and his crucial leadership during a pivotal time of transition in Issaquah. When Mayor Culver served, this community had around 8,000 residents. It also had a facility called the Skyport, which is where the Pickering Retail Center and the Pickering Barn currently are. At the time he was serving, this was one of the most controversial issues. Could the Skyport continue to operate within this, this small city that was fast, fastly growing and changing? Or did things need to change? I talked with Councilmember Batara, who served with Mayor Culver during that time, and she said she appreciated his strong skills, his problem-solving skills, his ability to bring people together to have really hard conversations when the community was really upset and having a hard time talking about items. The one thing she said was really something she could have done without was his late-night meetings. They had many council meetings, and you should all be grateful, that went till 1:30 in the morning. And that was something that, that she said that was really hard, but that was just how committed he was to finishing off the conversation. So, I thought that was an amazing compliment to his abilities to bring people with very differing viewpoints together. The Skyport became an issue because this was a place where people did parasailing and gliding and out of a small airfield called the Skyport. It was around for a long time and mostly a weekend destination for quite a long time. But as the region grew and the interest in it, it became busier and busier. And when the city was redesigning Gilman Boulevard and putting in stoplights for the new alignment and the bigger, larger road, they immediately came into a conflict of the lights were interfering with operations at the Skyport. So, they found themselves in the conundrum of a growing city who was going to have to turn off the stoplights that they needed on a brand-new project because of the operation of the Skyport, which had outgrown its ability to service in that location. The community was super-divided. But through Mayor Culver's guidance and patience, they were able to work with the Pickering family, who no longer could operate the dairy farm there. And they went through a process to change that loan, change that land and change the zoning. One of very, very contentious conversations. And he handled it with such grace that we're all very grateful for that ability. Outside of the public arena, Mayor Culver also had an accomplished career in aerospace, working for Boeing for 32 years. As an engineer and project manager, he contributed to one of the humanity's greatest milestones, the Apollo moon landing. Mayor Culver also had a passion for the outdoors and adventure. He was an accomplished mountain climber and served as president of the Seattle Mountaineers. A.J. passed away on April 9th at age 92. He is survived by his three accomplished daughters, five grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. And we are very honored to recognize Mr. Culver here tonight. And I'd like to have a few other speakers come up and share their stories as well. Mayor Hines, would you like to come up? Mayor Hines served on the council with Mayor Culver. Thanks for coming tonight, Rowan.
Thank you. Very pleased to be here, even though it's not the occasion that we look forward to occasions to which at my age and A.J.'s age too often that we find ourselves for these things. But I would say that I have to agree with what Mayor Polly said about the Skyport issue, if anything. It's understated, grossly understated. But my recollection about A.J. was, I was council president when A.J. was first elected mayor in 82. And we had several discussions. Prior to, to that time, the mayor appointed all of the council positions and everything that was done involving the council. And after numerous discussions with A.J., he agreed that it was more appropriate that the council president make the decisions about how the council should be appointed. And I think has operated since then. I've been very pleased that he saw the wisdom in that. I remember two incidents that A.J. was particularly aggravated by. And one of them was car lots. He absolutely abhorred car lots. And, and so as a result, we never had any new car sales or used car sales in his squad during his tenure. And in my personal opinion, after he left, was at least, and with a car lot, your newer used vehicles are all shiny and clean. And, but I appreciated what his opinion on that. And the second, look at my notes here. Oh, the fire department. We had, always had a volunteer fire department because A.J. could not abide paying someone to sleep. And so, at that time, we had a volunteer department. We had a chief, we had a lieutenant, and we had one firefighter. And they worked during the day. And if there was any kind of an incident, the volunteers were the ones that came, did all the work under the leadership that we had there. And again, over the years, we've grown and matured beyond that. And obviously, a volunteer fire department would no longer apply. I never asked A.J. how he felt about it. I'm not sure if he ever changed that. And I guess the third comment, I asked Debbie Burdo, who was the editor of the Issaquah Press during his time and my time in office. And she said, the one thing that she remembers about A.J. that he was particularly concerned about was recycling. He was not in favor of it. And eventually, it took some time, but he eventually came around to the point that it was, it was a good idea. He bought into it. And now you can look at where we've been since then. And that is a testament to how he was flexible and was interested in changing what was best for the community. And I enjoyed my time with him. I served eight years on the council with him as mayor. And I served eight years as mayor following him. And I appreciated what he, he did for me in preparation for my time. One of the things he did that I've never forgot and still have hanging on my wall in the bedroom in the office is a key to the city when I was elected mayor. And I thought that was a very nice touch. And he let me be me. And if any of you were around in the first four years after A.J.'s time as mayor, my first four years as mayor, it was not particularly easy for me, anyway. But I do appreciate A.J. and I do miss him. And I wish you all the best for that, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hines, for your words and also for your service and for bringing your beautiful wife tonight. We're glad to have you both. I'm going to ask Dave Osmer, who is the campaign manager for A.J. Culver, to come up. And while he's coming up, I'll tell you about one more story that Councilmember Batara told me about. And that was our sign code. A.J. had very specific concerns about Issaquah's new Gilman Boulevard area turning into something that was just a bunch of signs facing the highway, blinking on and off, just a big retail zone. Now, it is a retail zone. But we are known for having one of the toughest sign codes, and I didn't know why, and now I do. The really beautiful thing for me, Mayor Hines appointed me to the Development Commission way back in 1994, and we did sign approval back then. I loved where we were going with it. But a new group came along. The Mountains of Sound Greenway came along. And they told everybody along that corridor, Issaquah is the one who knows how to keep the corridor green in an urban area. So, whenever you are getting grief, just remember it was Mayor Culver, who was the first one who thought of that idea. And it's carried on 40 years later. And Mountains of Sound Greenway is one of the biggest flag bearers for the entire thing. So, so appreciative of his efforts there. Dave?
Good evening, council members and guests and members of the family. So, delighted to see you again. I'm Dave Osmer, and I, A.J. and I were backdoor neighbors when we first moved to Issaquah in the late 60s, early 70s. And we hit it off right away. I think primarily due to our joint affection and reverence for the outdoors. And he helped me get involved with the city. And interestingly that you should bring that up, helped me get appointed to the then Design Commission, which was the predecessor for today's Development Commission. The Design Commission had jurisdiction over that sign ordinance. So, I have to tell you a quick story. I wasn't going to mention this, but since you brought it up, there was, at that time, was a guy who made wood-blasted signs. And I can't remember his name, but he was a true artist. And so, whenever we got an application to review from him, we almost just rubber-stamped it. But we, we had to look at it, and staff had looked at it. Well, one day, one of his customers came back to him and said, "You ought to take a look at your sign after it was hung up for at least two or three months." And remember, we'd all seen it. The staff had all seen it. His customers had been walking in and out seeing it. And he'd seen it. The sign read Certified Pubic Accountant. We went back and we looked at the drawings. And guess what the drawing said? The same thing. So, all of those eyes had looked at that, reading what they thought it was supposed to be rather than what it was. So, that was an interesting lesson in observation. But I want to commend the city for this, first of all, this celebration and for flying their flag at half-mast in A.J.'s honor. I had the honor of working with him. I helped him. Since I had a little experience in managing political campaigns, I helped him with his council, initial and second-term council campaigns. And also was his campaign manager when he decided to run for the legislature in 1978. We lost. And I think it was fortuitous that we did because he then became mayor, which was probably better for the city. But I will always remember him as a gentleman and a scholar and an absolutely incredible community citizen. Thank you.
I also want to see if, Holly, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Sure.
Awesome.
Wow, thank you for having us. This has been quite a journey for us. And I just, like, the whole building's different. Like, remember, we moved here in 69. So, the population was 7,800. And Pine Lake Plateau was just a place to have a kegger, literally. And so, things have changed. But some of the things, you mentioned everything I wanted to say about signage. And I really think the legacy of Issaquah was due to my dad. I mean, seriously. And it was a great town to grow up in. We had a wonderful experience. So, anyway, we, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what else to say. We just wanted to say thank you for having us. And really, thank you, Mayor Polly, for putting that wonderful article in there. And my oldest daughter kind of spearheaded it. She lives on the East Coast and wanted to be part of all this. It's, being mayor was really the thing that he loved the most. So, out of all his public offices, and that's kind of a big deal. So, anyway, thank you, and you guys are doing a good job.
Every past mayor I've ever talked to said it's their favorite job. And that is a testament, it's true. And that is a testament to kind of the value of the work that you're all doing as elected officials. I will tell you, at this point in my last year of my second term, I haven't made up my mind if it's my favorite job yet. It is an extremely difficult job. It is time-consuming, time away from your family, from your friends, from activities. But I think what we really heard about your dad and your grandfather is that he made legacy decisions that we can still talk about today, that inform decisions that they make on policy today. And for that, we are eternally grateful. So, if you could all join me in a moment of silence for the passing of Mayor A.J. Culver, I would appreciate that. Thank you to everyone who came tonight and was able to share their stories. In particular, thank you to the family. I was going to take a short recess now to allow folks to say hi and say goodbye and decide if they want to stay for a long meeting till 1:30 in the morning, not tonight, or not. So, City Clerk, if it's okay, can we have a five-minute recess? Thank you. So, we're in recess. Hi, everyone. A lot of new friends and a lot of old friends here tonight. But we do have to continue with the meeting. So, Tisha, do we need to close the glass door, maybe? Or you think we're okay? I'm going to call the meeting back to order at 7:34. I'm going to try. The next item on the agenda this evening is ID 1815, the Ruth Keys and Community Environmental Awards. And, yeah, okay. We're going to take a few minutes and just let the room clear, because, hi! I just love this town. Honestly, I just, I just do. Okay, I'm going to take it back a few minutes because I know it is extremely hard to hear me trying to bring the meeting back to order. But the next item on the agenda this evening is ID 1815, the Ruth Keys and Community Environmental Awards. So, I want to thank you all for being here in person this evening, and if you're watching, because we're going to honor some very special people in our community. Together, their hours, weeks, and years of service have enhanced, preserved, and protected our community's cherished environment. Tonight, we're going to start with the Ruth and Dan Keys Award for Sustainable Environment. And I'm going to go over to the microphone. City Clerk always has her eyes on what I'm doing. It's perfect. Okay, so we have a couple of awards. And this first award, the Ruth and Dan Keys Award, is named after one of the community's tireless environmental advocates, Ruth Keys. She was a grassroots activist who, for more than four decades, advocated for preservation of landmarks and natural areas. The Ruth and Dan Keys Award honors those who have shown extraordinary leadership to protect our natural surroundings. Our winner this year is the embodiment of those noble goals. And I'm thrilled to recognize Steve Williams as our 2025 Ruth and Dan Keys Award winner. Unfortunately, Steve is not able to join us tonight, but has asked that his good friend, Dave Kapler, who I saw come in, receive the honor on his behalf. And Dave, if you want to come up here, I'll go through a couple of my notes, and then I'll hand the microphone over to you. For decades, Steve has been instrumental in shaping Issaquah's public lands. He managed the Cougar Mountain Regional Wildlife Park for 20 years. And he was instrumental in shaping the master plan and ensuring those lands would exist for people and wildlife for many generations. Mr. Williams has held numerous roles at the Issaquah Alps Trails Club, from leadership in the organization to leading hikes for our community members. Mr. Williams was also critical in the recent victory for protecting additional wildlands through the Save Coal Creek Initiative. A community icon in the truest sense, Mr. Williams' efforts have aided thousands of people in learning more about the value of open spaces as well as the history that has helped shape those spaces. In the words of Ken Konixmark from an Issaquah Alps Trail Club newsletter in 2005, "Steve has been a quiet hero in the Issaquah Alps for decades. His dedicated efforts have guided, built, and maintained the regional wildland park we all enjoy as Cougar Mountain today." Steve's efforts go far beyond that, though. He also was included in invaluable trail projects on Squawk and Rattlesnake Mountains as well. The careful stewardship that Steve brought to these lands The careful stewardship that Steve brought to these lands will benefit both people and wildlife for generations to come. I want to thank Steve for all of his contributions and for his decades and decades of service. Want to have, welcome up former council member and Issaquah Alps Trail Club Board Member, Dave Kapler. I'm not sure if you're still on the board. So that I can present a gift, a gift for Steve. But first, what I'd like to do is have you share some comments and thoughts.
Well, it's an honor to be here, that Steve asked me to be here. When somebody mentions the name Steve Williams, I, in my mind, I flash seeing him behind a table, and kids in front of the table, and they're looking at historical objects from miners or logging, or some other high-interest thing, like one of the cub, bear cub that he is, that was, he found in front of his park on Cougar Mountain, and did the taxidermy work on that. And he had other birds in that, and other road kills that he had had as displays. Very high interest in youth, and for talking, working with them. I want to thank Tom Anderson, who did an outstanding job of the write-up, that, explaining so much about the great work that Steve has done over decades. Sustainability Department is great, too. Wonderful. My wife is a big, big fan. Okay. There's been a, over time, there's been a really strong connection between the city and the county with the Cougar Mountain Regional Wildland Park. We sometimes claim the biggest park of its kind in the country, but it's in the top two or three, anyway. But Steve managed that for 20 years, and actually, out of retirement, came back to monitor the ground for subsidence of coal mines or heat, because some of the mines are still burning underneath Cougar Mountain. His work with the city staff, and council, and, you know, everybody with city, getting the county working together, it's just been amazing. He's also, of course, had to work with Bellevue Parks, which is right up against Cougar Mountain Park, and Newcastle, and the city of Newcastle is right up against some of the park, too. There's just been a tremendous cooperation between these cities and the county on Cougar Mountain. On Squawk, we do have three partners for Squawk, the county, the state, and the city of Issaquah, and their properties are kind of mixed up. City's got property on both sides of the mountain, county's got splotches of it, and then the king, and state has a bigger part. Hopefully, we can be continuing the kinds of work that Steve did on Cougar to do that same with Squawk, and coming up with that. The city's done some great purchases of property, adjoining the state park. We're just not getting it all connected yet. That would be really something else. One other thing which we always have tried to do, and has been worked on, is trying to connect safely Cougar Mountain and Squawk Mountain. There's a signal now of pedestrian crossing at Talis, but you get over on the Squawk side, and there's a very minimal private property issue. If we could solve that, we could have a good connection between those two mountains. So, something for the future, for the city to carry on Steve's legacy. Thank you.
And Dave, I have some gifts I would like you to give to Steve, so stay up here for one second. You know, we so appreciate the work of these community members, who really, really make enormous differences. So we have a certificate of appreciation for Steve, and also, we have put his name on the Ruth and Dan Keys Award plaque, which hangs in this council chamber. And we have a gift from Salmon Days Artists that I would like for you to give to him for, as show appreciation. Thank you for coming in and speaking about his legacy and his work.
It was an honor and a pleasure. Thank you.
The next award this evening is the Community Environmental Award. And several years ago, we had decided, with the amazing, astounding efforts that we were seeing blossoming all through the community, that maybe we needed to have another award, where you didn't have to put your 40 to 50 years in, but you did have to provide some insightful, energetic, creative approaches to our natural environment. And so, the Community Environmental Award was created. It builds upon the legacy of the Ruth Keys Award. Issaquah gives out the Community Environmental Award to recognize outstanding achievements by individuals, groups, and organizations. It's my pleasure to present the Community Environmental Award to Mina June for her work on environmental activism and her leadership protecting and preserving the natural environment in Issaquah. So please join me in congratulating Mina. I'm going to say a few more words, and then I'd love to hand the microphone over, too, if you'd like to say something. Mina Alexandra June?
June.
June is, yeah, that is, June, thank you, is a senior at Gibsonak High School in Issaquah. Mina's work exemplifies the values of the award, and through her dedication to conservation, education, policy advocacy, and community engagement. Her leadership has inspired hundreds of people through engaging projects that encourage community-wide participation in sustainability efforts. By working with her peers to push for a district-wide sustainability policy, she has taken steps to create lasting environmental change at an institutional level. Additionally, her ability to bring together diverse groups, including schools, local artists, community partners, and city officials, has fostered greater collaboration and action towards shared environmental goals. I'm going to let Mina speak for a few moments, and then I would love to hand her also her award and congratulations. So, Mina.
Yeah, thank you so much. I feel really honored to have received this award as a high school student and as an individual and citizen of Issaquah. I'm grateful to the city, Stacy specifically, Department of Sustainability, and all of their departments that work within sustainability, for giving me opportunities and connections to the city, and also just inspiring me, all of my teachers and peers and everyone in the city that works on creating spaces for youth to be able to be involved. And I'm really excited, though I haven't put in 40 to 50 years of anything ever. I am continuing and excited to continue work with not only just the city of Issaquah, but in sustainability, environmental stewardship. And though I am leaving next year, I will always remember Issaquah and come back, of course, to visit and make, look at the progress that has been made, but also remember it as the roots and origins of my sustainability and environmental career.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
So, also have a certificate for Mina and a gift from Salmon Days as well, but I would love for you to bring up your friends, your mentors, your family, and do a picture with us in front of the council diocese, if that's okay.
Sure, yes, of course.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very welcome. So just a few closing comments there. I should mention that the artist that we were using was John Mulanen from Salmon Days for both of those. And also, just want to thank both of the awardees, but also our environmental board, which we have just stood up in less than five years. And to all of those in the community who are currently working, volunteering, and dedicating their time and efforts to protecting our environment and advancing sustainability throughout the city. If you're inspired today, we welcome your enthusiasm and encourage you to connect with the work of our awardees and the other amazing efforts and opportunities in Issaquah. The next item today is ID 1811, Administrative Professionals Day Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Executive Department Coordinator Lindsay Marsh. And Lindsay, is this your first meeting? Where's Lindsay? Is this your first meeting? City Council! I'd like to introduce you to Lindsay Marsh. Come on up here with Council Member Ray. Welcome, Lindsay. Oh, and Aronia. Hi, Aronia. Aronia, in case you have not been up to City Hall, is the welcoming face of our city, and she is just a blessing to have her up front. Welcome, Aronia. And, Council Member Ray.
Thank you.
You're on.
Whereas Administrative Professionals Day is observed annually in workplaces around the world to recognize the important contribution of administrative support staff, and whereas administrative professionals play an essential role in coordinating the office and governmental operations of the city of Issaquah, and whereas administrative professionals are vital contributors to today's team-oriented work environment and are key frontline public relations ambassadors for their organizations. And whereas the work of administrative professionals today requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, computer, or customer service, and other vital office management responsibility, and most importantly, have the willingness to learn and accept new challenges. Therefore, we recognize Thursday, April 24, 2025, I want to make it a week, not just a day, I think it should be, as Administrative Professionals Week in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join us in thanking our city's administrative professionals for their service and outstanding contributions.
Council Member Ray, if you could, if you, Lindsay, would you like to say anything? Aronia, fantastic.
We've prepared a speech.
Thank you for this thoughtful proclamation recognizing Administrative Professionals Day. We are both incredibly honored to be accepting this proclamation on behalf of the Administrative Professionals for the city of Issaquah.
This proclamation acknowledges both the valuable work of administrative professionals, as well as recognizes the commitment and adaptability the administrative professionals bring to every organization. While this is a celebration of administrative professionals, we also wanted to take a brief moment to extend our gratitude to our community members, businesses, and visitors for being so engaged.
The consistent and growing engagement from all of you is what makes our job so special and what makes our city so unique. So, it also allows us to continue to improve every day, so we just wanted to say a warm thanks.
Lastly, once, oh, sorry. Once again, we thank council for dedicating time today in this meeting to recognize and celebrate administrative professionals, and for allowing us the honor to accept this proclamation.
Wow. And I get to work with these two ladies every day. So, this team is so fantastic. So proud of you. Thank you, ladies. The next proclamation is ID 1814, Small Business Month Proclamation, and I'd like to invite Economic and Housing Development Manager Jen Davis Hayes, and Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce CEO Julie Hartwick to the lectern. Welcome, ladies, and Council President will be presenting this proclamation.
Well, first of all, thank you for being here. A, a community is not a community without the businesses that help it thrive, and so I'm grateful that we are taking this moment to just recognize. So, yeah. So, whereas National Small Business Week has been recognized every year in May since 1963 to kick off Small Business Month and highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies, and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.8 million small businesses in the United States, and these small businesses are responsible for 67% of net new jobs created since 2000. And whereas entrepreneurship continues to be one of the best pathways to the American dream, as many small business economic indicators are returning to pre-COVID levels, including a near historic trend of small business employment growth in the fourth quarter of 2024. And whereas the city of Issaquah is home to a wide variety of businesses, over 2,600 home-based and physical business locations. And whereas the city of Issaquah celebrates the hard work, dedication, and resilience of our local small businesses and entrepreneurs, and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. Now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim the month of May to be Small Business Month in the city of Issaquah, and I urge all community members to join in special observance in celebration of Issaquah's small businesses and entrepreneurs. Do you like to say a few words, either, both?
We did not plan a joint speech. We do apologize for that. City Council Members and Mayor Polly, thank you so much for this proclamation and for recognizing the importance of small businesses and entrepreneurship in our communities. Yeah, I can't say any better. It's okay. It's a tongue, it's a mouthful. You know, our small businesses here in Issaquah, they are the heartbeat of our community. We each have separate small businesses, locally owned mompa shops that all of us love, and it's each of these businesses, along with our entrepreneurs, that make our community vibrant, right? They're the ones that, businesses that attract tourism, they're the ones that patronize our community, they're the ones that bring our uniqueness and our credibility to our community. So, thank you so much for the proclamation and for recognizing the importance of that. Our chamber and our Economic Development Department, the past year, we created a How to Do Business in Issaquah booklet. It was amazing, and so that's just one of our efforts collaboratively that we have done together, that are trying to reach some of our home-based businesses and those that are looking to open and to start a business here in Issaquah. So, it is so incredibly important that we embrace our businesses and to let them know that we're here for them time and time again, and I think collaboratively, that's one of our main goals, is to let them know that, that we're here for them, and the city's here, the chamber's here, and all of our other community partners. So, thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Julie.
We're good.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Jen. Thank you for all that you do for our community. It's much appreciated. We do have another proclamation, ID 1836, Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Proclamation, and I'd like to invite Alicia Spinner, Laura Ni, and Junie Wu from the local nonprofit, The Circle, to the lectern, and I think Nareen Indrag, I'm going to say this wrong, Indragio? Okay, sorry about that. Come on up, ladies, and Council Member Joe is going to be presenting this proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is an annual celebration that recognizes the historical and cultural contributions of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders in creating the American story. And whereas, we celebrate the growing diversity of Issaquah, with the second-largest race being Asian American residents, representing 28% of our population. Diversity brings richness, opportunity, and growth. And whereas, we acknowledge those contributions of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders to our local arts, education, sciences, and to our economic, social, and democratic institutions that strengthen our city. And whereas, we admit the past and current hardships for Asian American and Pacific Islander Americans, and strive to foster inclusion, to ensure all people have an equal opportunity to live and prosper. And whereas, we must continue to take proactive, a proactive stance, excuse me, that seeks solutions to address intolerance and disparity. They are our neighbors, coworkers, friends, and family, and commit to supporting members in a meaningful way by paying tribute through education, acknowledgement, and celebration within our community. And whereas, we come together as a community in a spirit of unity to celebrate the invaluable contributions that enrich our city with Asian and Pacific Islander heritage. Now, therefore, the Mayor, Mayor Lou Polly, of the city of Issaquah, does proclaim May 25, May 2025 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Would you like to step up and say a few words?
Thank you. Thanks for City Council Member and Mayor Polly. It's really an honor to get this proclamation as the Asian. my passion to see more and more of the cultural awareness. And especially right now in Issaquah, we saw so many diversity groups and communities. So it's really honored and pleasure to have this AAPI celebration. And I... We want to invite all of you to come to our AAPI event celebration on May 10 in the Issaquah Community Center, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So if you have time, just come and join us for lots of Asian performances. And also, we have different Asian craft and art stations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want something? Yeah. Thank you.
Hello. I just want to say thank you. And I know we're here to celebrate the Asian community, but I have to say thank you for your support. Our community of immigrants is going through a very, very difficult time. I'm very emotional these days because we have had ICE coming into our communities, and it's very, very stressful. I've been all day in the phone with parents who don't know if they should send their kids to school, right? Many of the kids today went late to school because ICE has come to our communities early in the morning, so no one wants to go out of their homes before 9:00 a.m. So I had a conversation also with the district this morning because they're like, what's going on? Why kids are not coming on time, right? It's very stressful what we're going through, but having the support of the mayor and all of you, it's very, very important and really appreciated.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you.
Let's take a picture. Step forward.
And thank you all for coming and all the work you do in our community. It is so appreciated. The next item of business this evening is Audience Comments. And this is a time that members of the public may address council either in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance will be called upon first, but we will also look for others in the room if you have not signed up and online. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you are in the room and you did not sign up, we will make sure you have an opportunity to speak. And Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for General Audience Comments or indicated desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So if you are making comments, you are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. And comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while it's not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. Please... Sorry. When you are recognized, if you are online, please unmute your microphone. And if you're in this room, please step up to the podium that is facing council. And there is a little button on the base for you to turn the microphone on. We can show you how to do that if we need to. And state your name, address, relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. And please limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and we lose you, we hope that you're able to join us, but we are... Rejoin us, but we will have to continue the meeting. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city and the city council takes your comments seriously. We thank everyone who's taken the time to address us this evening, either in person or virtually. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Michelle Whitehead.
Come on up.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, City of Issaquah Council Board Members for hearing my public comment and for your audience. My name is Michelle Whitehead. I am a resident of the Issaquah Highlands since 2013. Did you want me to give you my exact address?
No, you're fine.
Okay. I did cut this speech down. I am here today to share my lived experience with my now 12-year-old autistic daughter who has a very complex disability profile and is... and the intersectionality of disability and mental health as it relates to the first responder crisis response in the city of Issaquah. With April being Autism Awareness Month, my goal here is to advocate for first responder training for Issaquah police officers, for Eastside Fire Rescue first responders, for CERT first responders, to include in their professional and community outreach teams training around autism, ADD, around appropriate autistic crisis approach, around the need for trauma-informed care, around the need for trauma-informed response for children under the ages of 18, especially minors who are experiencing a mental health crisis, having a self-harm episode, or who may be on the autism spectrum, who may be verbal or nonverbal, and who may not be able to explain what they're experiencing. I have been in the process of obtaining my own CERT training, and this federal part of autism sensitivity training is not currently in the CERT units or manuals. There is a large disability community in Issaquah, and especially a large ADD, which stands for Intellectual Developmental Disability Community. How do we respond to children, teens, and young adults in crisis? What is our plan? How will parents know their child will be safe in the event an incident occurs when they are not experiencing it, when they are not expecting it? Autism is now 1 in 31 children, 1 in 12 and 1/2 boys, and is identified rapidly with being dual diagnosis with ADHD and other mental health disorders. Due to the most recent incidents in the news of the 17-year-old boy in Boise, Idaho named Victor Perez, who was shot nine times and killed by police first responders, and a boy in Arlington, Washington, missing named Jonathan Wang. There are multiple states who have had tragic outcomes in the stories of children under the age of 18 who are killed, missing, commit suicide, and wander. It is very crucial that the first responders know as much information as possible going into a crisis response call. And currently, in the city of Issaquah, there is no outreach team for children under the age of 13 or ages 13 to 18 when they are in crisis. On June 23, 2024, my daughter, who was 11 years old at the time, experienced a self-harm incident when I was 20 minutes away from home. She did the right thing by seeking help, going to a neighbor's house, and she followed her safety plan. There was a large response by the city of Issaquah Police, ambulances, and Eastside Fire and Rescue Teams, care teams, and by private Issaquah Highlands security to my house. They needed to speak to my daughter alone. The age of consent in this state is 13 years old, and I was only asked if I had any questions. I felt completely helpless, and our family is still suffering these decisions. The ambulance bill came several weeks later and was $4,000 for an approximate 22-mile one-way trip and was eventually paid for by Medicaid, Apple Health, by Washington State taxpayers, and the federal government. Almost a year later, and my daughter is still not home. This event on June 23, 2024, was the catalyst for my daughter to be removed from my home. Due to the lack of policies and ability to use flexible critical thinking, we had to suffer long-term consequences of what happens when children are in crisis, when the parent is not involved, when the parent is not included, when the parent is not consented, and when the family is not involved in the decision-making process of committing a child involuntary or not. I want you to see that this one incident caused a domino effect of motions, petitions, and family separations. There needs to be more understanding around disability and mental health. There is a disconnect in public information, communication, and transparency. The training that is available to parents does not always align with what the professional training provides. Parent training is most likely more around the psychology rather than around the physicality of de-escalation. Therefore, there is a huge gap in understanding and a bridge that is impossible to pass when the two sides of these two worlds, both private and public, do not intersect in real-life, boots-on-the-ground, tangible, life-saving way. My daughter did advocate for herself and ask for help. It is not lost on me that if my daughter would have had a knife and a lighter in her hand that day that the police would have showed up, she could have been shot, she could have been tased, and she could have been tackled to the ground. In summary, I would like to see autism, disability, and children with ADD represented in the CERT first responder training. I would like to explore funding in this training. I would like the city of Issaquah to be more forthcoming with their autism and de-escalation training. I would like to see the city partner with autism partners, partner with the ADD community, and partner with first responders so we can have a clear, concise, transparent understanding of the minors in crisis, whether they are verbal or nonverbal. I would like the city council to consider funding for additional training for CERT teams, for outreach teams, and for Eastside Fire and Rescue cares teams for the mental health professionals who are paid consultants. Yes.
Have you prepared written comments for the council?
I did. I did. I have sent that.
If you could summarize in the next minute or two, I want to thank you for sharing this story. I can see how emotional it is.
Thank you.
And I would get the city clerk to hand around the detailed version of the comments.
Thank you. I would like to have an open conversation around trauma-informed response and trauma-informed care and what that looks like. If the city would consider programs such as Code Joshua or Project Guardian, that provides first responders a database of persons on the autism spectrum. Thank you again for your time today, and thank you for hearing about my lived experience. And thank you so much to our officers and dedicated officers who are keeping our families and children safe.
Thank you for sharing, Michelle. And City Clerk, you'll be able to distribute those after? Thank you very much. City Clerk, who is up next on the...
Next, we have Dave Wagner.
Come on up, Dave.
Good evening, Council. David Wagner, 22529, 42nd Place, Southeast, in Providence Point. Thank you for the wonderful signal you have up there, because it's a lifesaver. Just want to tell you quickly something you don't hear about. Our mayor has attended one, but we have every year a flag retirement ceremony for all the old used flags in the city of Issaquah. They're dropped by the senior center as soon as they get that flag box back there. And this year, we, with the scouts, we had 15 scouts. We had nine parents and nine veterans, and we retired 262 flags. So the 19 years that we've been doing this, we're well over 8,000 flags that we have retired for the city of Issaquah. I asked the mayor today, what would we do if we didn't have this program? Would you just throw them in the garbage? So thank goodness our VFW is there to do this wonderful, free, no-charge flag disposal for the city. And we plan to do some more. I had wonderful slides, but I didn't get my information to Tish in time today, so I'm in trouble. Can't show my slides, but I've learned that lesson the hard way. One last thing I would like to say, because I won't get the opportunity to do it again. Our VFW post and American Legion post are working hard together to do something for Bill Ramos' service when it comes about. We don't know what that is yet, but tomorrow morning, I'm swiping the flag off of the... I do have a new flag. Swiping the flag off the top of the flagpole so we can honor him. I want to say something personal. Bill was a friend. I knew Bill for a long time, before he was ever a council member, before he was a state legislator, before he was a state senator, along with my good friend, Dave Kapler. There was a couple of tumultuous years here in Issaquah with the senior center, and Bill was a wonderful friend along with Dave. We worked hard to get that turned around, and we did. And I will never forget him for his friendship during a very difficult, tumultuous time in my hometown. I miss him. We didn't always see eye to eye politically, but we always saw eye to eye, which is a good thing. So thank you for letting me be here tonight and share with you. Our VFW post plans to continue on for years to come in retiring these flags. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Actually, we shouldn't, but we're not supposed to... The clerk will get upset if we have a conversation during Audience Comments, I guess.
May 26th, Memorial Day? Yes. Memorial Day weekend. We will be putting flags and crosses out on Saturday morning. I will get to Thomas and get him to put it on the website. We always get a ton of city people to come up. Something you need to know. We have one gentleman that flies up here from California every year just to participate in this wonderful service. That's Saturday, 9:00 in the morning, putting that out. Monday morning, the 26th, is our service at 10:00, and then we take the cemetery down at 6:00 p.m. We'll be doing it again, just like we've always done it, with the help of Liberty High School Junior Naval ROTC. Does that answer the question?
Thanks for saying that.
I didn't ask a question. Thank you.
Just for clarification, City Clerk, is there anyone else who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Kai Han.
Kai, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Lou Polly, and then thank you, Lindsey. Well, since I've been here three times since, so you know what I'm talking about. But I come here to clear myself, and I share my experience and my background, so they are more comfortable with me. But one thing is, I born in South Korea. I've been 20 years in South Korea. I was in military. Demilitarized, John is heavily armed. When National Guard or military is not strong, country is jeopardy. So I don't like Korea, so I moved to New Zealand. I stand two years without any problem. One time, I have one young boy spill my face with spit. So I didn't do anything about it. So I knew they have a little bit rational discretion. And I come to Wisconsin, two years. I was in the Wisconsin O'Klaire Chippewa Valley Technical College as a bookkeeper. I was outstanding. And then professor said, why don't you go into university? So I went to the Atlantic Technical College, and I went to the City University. And then they said, oh, why don't you get master? So I went to the University of Washington, tried to get my master, and I get old, so I have to marry. So I married my wife. And then September 11 happened, so I lost my job as accountant. And then my wife is a rich woman, so she give money to build up the business. So I built up my business. I have like a fortune. And then I have two kids. One is her son. He's now four years... Four years in the college, and my daughter is going to college. I'm so happy about it. My house become double. I'm very fortunate in this community. Issaquah, I investing, I got a good harvest. I want to contribute in this communities. I don't want to be any criminal matter in my name. That's not going to happen. I follow the law. I obey the law. I contribute to the community. That's my lifetime thing. And I learned that with my beautiful, lovely American lady. She told me two things in America. If you're doing good thing, you got a blessing three times. If you're bad thing, you got punished 10 times. And the one word, I think is Abraham Lincoln said, you can lie to some people, but you can't lie to all the people. You can't lie to all the people, you can't lie to some people, you know? This happened is because of one liar. I keep telling you, everybody, because I'm innocent, I'm clear. I didn't touch anybody. I'm a skin instructor. I deal with the kid all the time. I work for the school. I work... I deal with the public. I have owned my business. I have a franchise license. I have a licensed brokers. All, everything affect criminal matter, but criminal matter is not my name. I want to be very clear, whole community, clear my name. I didn't break the law. Maybe they have attitude issue, they have some kind of issues, or they have some confusion issues. I have a nice property in the Pine View. One Indian guy, my dog was walk around, and my dog peek on his glasses. He tried to take a picture of me. In Asian community, that's very big insulting, especially I'm 60 years, looking like gray hair. I should a little bit of the respect for my community. But that young guy, he took a picture of my home. Why he's not going to tell me, why? Why don't you... Your dog is go some places. That's not... That's no good, my idea. Please don't do this. That's very acceptable. That's very acceptable, but taking somebody's pictures is very insulting. It happened few times, another ethnic group, especially Indian. I was in sauna, one guy was so lousing. And then he keep talking, and then America said, please be quiet. And he keep rowing. No, that's not, no good idea. No physical involved. Same thing as me. I was stop parking at Costco. Costco is so heavily busy, 2:00 p.m. I'm waiting for my next flight in the side process, so I have one more minute. I never ever touch anybody. Now, if a policeman, chief police here and prosecutor, I not talk them directly, man-to-man, eye-to-eye. If you have evidences, I go to jail in less of my life. I'll give a million dollars donation to these communities. But if you can prove, please let me go. I'm 60 years old man, you know, I want to be nice to this community. But clear my name. I'm not kind, maybe, I'm not maybe nice, but I never ever broke the law. I didn't touch him, I will swear. If I touch him, I will be lifetime jail. I'll give a million dollars donation to this community. I have a pre-trial since May 6. I'm going to tell the judge. Judge is not going to do anything about it. Prosecutor, if you sure, you're going to trial, but you're losing your job. If you prove, I go to jail, may as well live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just missed it. Thank you, Mr. Han. Is there anyone else signed up, city clerk, or anyone online indicating a desire to speak?
No one else has signed up, and there is one person online, but they're not indicating a desire to speak.
Okay. Would anybody else in the room that has not had an opportunity to speak like to get up and speak?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Helen Flanders. This is my son, Nick. We live just outside of city limits, but our mailing address is Issaquah. But we are members of the local school. And I just kind of wanted to piggyback on what Michelle had said. This is a terrifying walk in life. Like I said, 1 point, 1 in every 12 and 1/2 boys is autistic. That's a large number of our community, and we have even more girls as well. And I remember when Nick was four, going to Salmon Days Festival and going up to the police officers and being like, please, tell me, is there a way to register so you have a picture of him, so that if he runs and I'm at work, or, you know, the school he runs, there's some way to give you guys information? Or if, this is thinking far ahead, but what if he comes with a knife at some point, and I'm calling, I'm like, I can't struggle this. He's supposed to be six foot four when he's fully grown. I don't know what I'm going to do. How am I going to get him subdued without getting him hurt? If Issaquah Police or King County Sheriff's ultimately, if people knew, if we could self-identify, obviously don't want to require anyone to give information, but if you could self-identify and be part of this database, people, police officers, mental health professionals, they come more equipped to the conversation, more equipped to the scene. And our life is terrifying. Nick's a runner. We don't have, something else to consider? We don't have any playgrounds that have, like, fenced-in areas. We try to find, for a long time, we've tried to find indoor play areas. I know a couple other communities like Snoqualmie are looking at trying to build some playgrounds with a little bit of, you know, fencing. It's scary right now. And it is heartbreaking watching what's going on in the rest of the world. I do think Issaquah police officers are very nice, and they seem very calm and equipped every time I've dealt with them. But we also don't know what's going to happen 10 years down the road. Cultures change in precincts. You know, I do think that it's not necessarily the rules, but it's the cultures. And so I want, if you guys could, to have like some kind of ad hoc committee, you know, talk to members of the autism community, and try to be, you know, getting policies and procedures in place ahead of time, take a little bit of the stress off of us parents. A large number of us, I'm not, I'm married, but the divorce rate is, I think, 2/3 of autistic families. So there's a lot of us who are doing it alone, and it's just terrifying, and they get big. And at some point, they grow up and they're no longer minors, and we have to figure out how to deal with 25-year-olds, but they're still six-year-olds, you know? So yeah, we need long-term support in the community. That's all I really have.
Well, thanks for getting up and sharing. I'm not seeing, would you like to speak this evening? Can you over here? No? Okay. Just checking, want to make sure I didn't miss anybody in the room. I want to thank the residents who came in this evening. We had a couple people talking about comments on first responder training. We also heard about our local VA's flag retirement program that is, you know, pretty unique to our city, and also comments on the passing of Senator Ramos, and comments on a pending court case that will be heard in the Issaquah Court. So I want to thank all of you for sharing your thoughts in front of council and on camera with us tonight. As a reminder, in between meetings, you are also able to write your council at any time at citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. So the next item of business on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. I do not have any remarks on any consent calendar items, but I would like to check in with committee chairs or their designate, if there are any items that need to comment. Yes, Councilmember Hall. We might have to share.
Thank you. Yeah, just really quickly, you noticed Agenda Bill 8974 is on our consent calendar. This is the 2025 Title 18 clarifying amendments. That was before the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. Again, these were just kind of the housekeeping, small housekeeping items that were going their way through the process once they were identified by staff and code users. And we have more substantial policy amendments coming in the coming months. Both PPC and PDE reviewed this and recommend adoption. Thanks.
Thanks. Are there any other committee chairs that have comments on the consent calendar? Is there a motion? Council President?
Yeah. I move we approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Well, and guess what, Council President? I forgot to say a few things. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payrolls been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Yay. And does anybody desire to remove any items? Okay. So, sorry for jumping ahead. Thank you for the motion, Council President. Is there a second?
Second.
So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries 7-0. Thank you for that. We're going to move into regular business, and we'll start with AB 8969, the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project Preferred Concept. And the request before council this evening is to approve the resolution. I'd like to invite Transportation Engineering Manager John Mortenson to the podium. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Mayor Polley and council members. John Mortenson, Transportation Engineering Manager. Give me just a minute to get the slide loaded. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project. With me is Brent Powell from Pratite. He's the lead for the consultant, and he's able to help answer any questions that I'm not able to. The purpose of tonight's item is to seek approval of the project study report for the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project by resolution. This is a project located in the Squawk Mountain neighborhood. The slide shows the location of the project. It's along the 12th Avenue Northwest and Mount Olympus Drive Northwest corridor. On the southern end, it begins at Southwest Mount Markem Place, which is where the existing sidewalk is located at. And then it goes to the north until it almost gets to Northwest Firwood Boulevard, where it ties in with the existing sidewalk. I'm not going to go over every little spot on this timeline, because this presentation's going to really walk through this timeline, but there've been a lot of touchpoints with the community, with multiple surveys to the neighborhood, as well as touchpoints with the Transportation Advisory Board, and multiple meetings with the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee that have brought us to where we're at tonight. And before I get into the details of it, I wanted to give a little background on the budget. The 2025 to 2026 operating budget did include funds to begin design on this project for Phase 1. There were several assumptions that were made with that entry into the budget, and one of them was that the project would be designed and constructed in phases, and that the majority of the work would be completed with city staff instead of hiring a consultant in order to reduce costs. As the budget got put together and the need to reduce overall cost for the city, there were staffing reductions, and the administration no longer has the staffing capacity to advance the project during this budget biennium. It is expected that the administration will have staffing capacity to work on the project and begin design in 2028, and construction is not currently funded. Little bit of a background on the project. It's a, the corridor is a two-lane road with no curb gutter, sidewalk, no landscaping, narrow shoulders, and it's a corridor with lots of mature Douglas fir and cedar and The work on this project began in summer of 2023 with a community engagement effort that really was about listening and learning from the community about what the priorities are for the corridor. And what the administration learned from the community is, there's a lot of support, very strongly, for sidewalks, general support for bicycle facilities, but the community prioritized tree preservation. There were concerns about vehicular speeds, and on-street parking was not a priority in the survey. With that information, the administration worked on formulating different alternatives, and came up with six alternatives that were vetted out. And one of the things that we learned really early on in this, as we're evaluating the six initial alternatives, is in order to build the corridor out to the city standard, which includes painted bike lanes, landscape planter strip with street trees and sidewalk, that it would have a significant impact to trees. And so the administration went to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee about a year ago and asked for support to advance non-code compliant alternatives with the thought process of, we didn't think that the neighborhood, as well as the city's comprehensive plan and other goals, would really want this project to be cutting down a 60-year-old cedar tree in order to put in a decorative street tree. And the committee gave the thumbs up to do that, and also said to ask the community for feedback on alternatives that were not code compliant, and also gave the administration thumbs up to develop guardrails for how to have deviations from the city standards in cases where we're trying to preserve trees. And with that, two alternatives were advanced to the community, and they're very similar alternatives. Both had sidewalk on one side of the corridor, and one of the alternatives had an uphill bike lane. The two alternatives were presented to the community in a public survey, and in my time with the city, this was the closest survey. I believe it was eight votes difference, 51% wanted a bike lane and 49% wanted only sidewalk. The survey did not disclose the cost, and the administration did not note the cost differential at the time. With it being so close, the next step was to develop a cost estimate for the differential between adding a bike lane and not, and that came to $2.5 million. The next step was to meet with the Transportation Advisory Board and get their feedback about whether to include an uphill bike lane for the project concept or not. And the administration's recommendation was to not include the uphill bike lane, and primarily driven by the extra $2.5 million, that that's a lot of money for the project, and also the impacts to trees that widening the road for an uphill bike lane would do. And so, at the Transportation Advisory Meeting on December 4, the TAB provided unanimous consensus on the recommendation and recommended not including the uphill bike lane in the preferred alternative. Following that meeting, the administration went to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee three times on, twice directly with this project and once regarding the street standards. In January, the same conversation was had, but this time with the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, about whether to include an uphill bike lane in the preferred alternative. And the committee gave unanimous support for not including the uphill bike lane, with the reasons being cost and impacts to trees. As I mentioned earlier, the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee told the administration to develop guardrails for a modification to the street standards on when to not install the landscape planter strip. And the administration presented those guardrails to the committee at the meeting in February, and the committee unanimously supported creating a deviation process to eliminate the landscape planter strip, to preserve trees, and to maintain driveway access, which both these are situations that come into play along this corridor. And finally, the final touchpoint with the committee was a month ago, and the preferred alternative and the draft study report for the project were presented to the committee, and also the committee supported the preferred alternative and the design study report, as well as the plan to further explore the feasibility of what we're calling the lower-cost preferred alternative, which I'll talk about here in a minute. The preferred alternative will have sidewalk on one side. It will not have bike lane, and there will be a crossing at Upper Hillside Cemetery. So the sidewalk on the southern end of the project will be on the east side of the corridor. And then once you get to the entrance to Upper Hillside Cemetery, there will be a crossing, and then it will continue on the west side of the corridor. There will be landscape planter strips, which are not shown on these exhibits, except for in situations where the project will try and preserve trees, as well as avoid impacts to critical areas and in locations with steep driveways. The design is also going to consider where to place mailboxes and the solid waste collection bins. Personally, that's one of my pet peeves, when we have a nice sidewalk and you're walking along and you see a bunch of trash bins in the way, and I think, how would someone in a wheelchair get through there? So this design's going to consider that. It'll also add bulbouts and raised medians for traffic calming to address the speed concerns that were brought to the administration during the first survey. The cost estimate is about $4.6 million. There's also additional costs. Right now, it's listed as $500,000 to $1 million, but it's probably closer to $1 million or more, to underground the overhead utilities in the southern segment of the project. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, there is a lower-cost preferred alternative that the administration wants to look at a little bit more carefully. And it's really similar to the preferred alternative, except for instead of a sidewalk, it would have an asphalt walkway next to the street, and that's a fancy word for a plastic traffic curb that would separate the walkway and the travel lane. And it wouldn't be as comfortable for pedestrians. It would require a new narrow street sweeper to clean behind the curb, which is included in the cost estimate of $1.6 million. But in order to advance this, the administration wants to spend a little bit more time. For one, we have not talked to the neighborhood about what their thoughts are, that they've been giving us feedback on sidewalks, so we want to get their input on it, as well as look at the liabilities and maintenance risks in addition to needing to get a new narrow street sweeper. And so the plan is to evaluate it over the next two years. So that way, in two years from now, when the council is having CIP deliberations, this might be added to, or the CIP might be revised to include the lower-cost preferred alternative, if that end up being the direction the community wants to go. The timing and next steps for this project are, right now, the administration is working on entry for the capital improvement plan, and it on entry for the capital improvement plan, and it will assume that the preferred alternative from the design study report will be included, and that over the next two years, the administration is going to do some due diligence on the lower-cost preferred alternative. And in 2027, there is a possibility that the capital improvement plan would be update well, it will be updated, and the project, the Squawk Mountain project will be updated as part of that update. But if the lower-cost preferred alternative ended up being the direction the community wants to go, then at that point, that's when it would be put into the capital improvement plan. The administration's recommendation is approval of the resolution adopting the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvements Project Study Report. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, John. The committee chair is yeah, I was just going to let Russell Joe maybe provide committee comments, and then we'll go to questions, and then we'll go to the motion. Committee Chair?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege of only attending one meeting on this particular topic, and Chris Ray will make the motion because his committee did the bulk of the work. But appreciate the summary, and we understand that progress is slow and that this might not be the the grandest scheme that we might have envisioned when we first started on this adventure. But it is something that is workable as the low-cost alternative is explored and as a preferred alternative are explored. It's something that I think our community needs, and our committee was supportive of the resolution going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And would it be appropriate, then, can we have Councilmember Ray give the any broader background that he may have?
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember Ray, any comments before we get to questions?
Sure. I mean, first and foremost, and I think John nearly hit on this, this is a necessary project, both for traffic calming and pedestrian safety, and I think that came through very clearly in what we heard. This is a classic example of the role that the city council plays in trying to balance competing priorities, where we want bike lanes and we want trees, and we want to be able to afford it, and we were in a situation where we were having to balance off those priorities. What I really appreciated was when we first tiptoed into this topic about a year ago, and we had a request for a deviation from a non-compliant streetscape, and we said, hey, this is great, yeah, we see where you're going, but we would like to have, as John said, guardrails. And so they came back with a really nice model that says it doesn't just address this one situation on Squawk Mountain, but gives us a template to use for other places where we need to balance competing needs with with the streetscape standards. So and then unfortunately, we would have loved to do bike lane and sidewalk, and that was clearly important to the community. But given the significant cost difference and recent budget pressures, we really came down to a do you want to do it at all, or do you want to do a bike lane and a sidewalk? So it was a trade-off between financial realities and 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 what was possible. So, you know, in summary, this is a was an incredible piece of engineering and assessment work to find ways to reduce the cost, really deliver on what the residents were looking for, and at the same time, make sure that we were minimizing the impact on existing residents. And we talked a lot about driveways and things like that, as well as preserving mature trees. So I think the option that's on the table from where the committee sat, you know, makes a lot of sense, and I really truly appreciated kind of having my monthly update with John on this on this project. So so thank you very much.
Thank you both for sharing those comments. Council, do you have questions on the project? Let's go with Council President, then Deputy Council President.
Thank you. So not having been on that committee and seeing this come forward, it seems like such an exciting idea, but I want to clarify, what we're really doing here is kind of approving the project study and recognizing all of the work that was done, but also not moving forward on this now because there isn't any budget. Is that a correct assessment?
Yes, and part of the reason why, in my opinion, we're asking to approve the concept now is that it will well, future councils could change the concept on the project. As staff who are going to be working on implementing this, it really helps to have council adopt a preferred corridor. It's something that we've done for other corridors, and I think it'll lead to a much more successful project.
Okay. And so within this, as you mentioned, there's the concept 2A that kind of doesn't have the raised sidewalks and those pieces. You mentioned that as a newer idea. Is that not the preferred concept?
Well, it might be the preferred concept in the eventually, but there's some due diligence that want to look at it from a liability and risk. Is the city putting itself at a in a position where it could lose a court case and have to pay out money? I I hope not. I don't think so, but really want to do some due diligence because it's pretty standard to have sidewalk next to a road, doing something a little bit more creative to give pedestrians a place to walk. Just really want to dig a little bit more into the details before we proceeded with something like that.
Okay. So by adopting this, we are not necessarily saying that's the preferred, or we don't prefer that variation. We are recognizing that it is one quite possible opportunity, but not selecting one or the other.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Council President?
You know, we we talked about oh, sorry. So we talked about or you talked about cutting down one cedar tree, and Councilmember Ray talked about significant tree loss. But I really, just for the public's understanding of the of the range of what we're talking about with tree loss, as I remember correctly, and you need to correct me if I'm wrong, we were talking about cutting down around 80 trees. Is that around the the number that we had?
I'm gonna guess you're probably right. I don't remember the exact number. I do remember it was a lot and
Yeah.
very significant.
Yeah, and I just wanted to point that out because for anybody who watches this video someday, that certainly was playing a very strong role in the conversation that we were having because our our climate action plan calls for us to increase our our canopy, not decrease it, and that would have been a significant decrease of the canopy. So just wanted to make sure that we clarified that on the record, that we were talking about significant tree loss there. Thanks.
Councilmember Joe, followed by Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions they were probably asked during the committee, but I think are important for the whole council to hear. One was concerning potential for funding for this project. And oftentimes, we'll do a transportation project and have the the whole project put together so it's eligible for funding from the state or the federal level. In this case, could you comment on why this project, even though we're doing a study, is not necessarily with the with the ultimate goal of getting funding because of its circumstance?
Yes. Thank you very much, Councilmember Joe. Good question. This is a project that would not be competitive for grants, and so it's a project that the city is going to have to fund. It's it's too bad there's not a grant program to provide sidewalk for a neighborhood like Squawk Mountain. I believe it's because almost every city, probably in the state, I can say every one I've been to in King County, has a neighborhood very similar to Squawk Mountain that doesn't have sidewalk and could desperately use it to improve the lives of the residents.
Great, thank you. The second question I had was concerning the narrow sweeper that might be necessary for this project. Are there other places in the city currently that we'd be able to use it, or would it just be kind of a asset that we'd be acquiring for future roadway projects similar to this one?
Another good question. It is something that would be utilized throughout the city, especially as we're building out the core street and the street standards that's part of the central Squawk redevelopment, where we have the protected bike lanes next to the sidewalk. That'd be a great location to utilize those and other locations, so it would definitely get used.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work on this project.
Councilmember Mertz?
Pardon me. I'm still a little confused about the state of the options that are in front of us, what it means to adopt the report tonight, and what conversation has occurred to the local residents in that neighborhood. In other words, there was an initial conversation, there was scoping and, you know, costing, and then now here we are back with some options and going through some what my old boss Jeff Bezos might call one-way doors, maybe two-way doors, things you can go through a door you can go through, and sometimes you can go back through it, sometimes you can't. All this in the context of what have we actually like our latest thinking, how much of that have we actually gone in front of the the neighborhoods impacted and discussed with them?
Okay. So to answer that question, and then I'll get to the first question. The administration presented two alternatives to the community, and both had sidewalk with curb. One had bike lane, one did not. And so the neighborhood has not seen any drawings unless they tune in to Mobility and Infrastructure Committee or this meeting tonight that show the tough curb in between a paved walkway and the travel lane. And so that is what they've seen, that's what they've been presented, is the sidewalk. And then to answer this first question they asked is the way you are being asked to approve is the design study report that identifies the preferred alternative of sidewalk with curb and gutter and planter strip in locations where planter strip can be installed with a little section that talks about there may be a lower-cost alternative to achieve something almost similar to the preferred alternative.
And would we be green-lighting that move to the lower-cost alternative? I'm seeing the mayor shake her head, no. I just want us to make sure that whatever we finally settle in on, that we've talked about it with the residents in that neighborhood before we commit ourselves.
Yes, and that is one of the main reasons why we want to take the next two years to work through the lower-cost preferred alternative because we don't want to rush it into the CIP that we're working on when we haven't talked to the neighborhood.
That would be the silver lining on this cloud, yes, indeed. This was so much easier when five of the seven councilmembers lived on Squawk Mountain, and we just punched above our weight. Now that there's only two of us, it's so much harder. Thank you very much for answers.
Well, the city's grown, Councilmember Mertz.
Great questions. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Can you remind me the street standards update? When does that come before council? When does it graduate from MNI to council?
Yes. So originally, it was going to come to Mobility and Infrastructure in June. It's been moved out to July in order to make room for the I-90 crossing, but the next touch point on the street standards update related to landscaping will be in July. There will be a minor update in May to the street standards where one sentence will get changed as part of the middle housing update. So I don't want to mislead anyone, but the the street standard that we've been working on and had the guardrails that we got feedback from the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee is scheduled for the July meeting of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Thank you. So not before full council until later this year?
Correct.
Q3, Q4, or something like that? Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Would the council object to me adding a few historical comments before you move to motion? I just really appreciated what the committee had done over the last few years, talking about all of this, lots and lots of talking. Once the property lines and utilities are located in an old older subdivision, and a priority is made on having a treed community, it's really hard then to go back in 50 years later and say, well, now people have more cars, but they also want to use bikes, and we're walking more. And so the nature and character of that neighborhood and how it is being lived in has changed so much in 50 years. This is like a real difficult puzzle to solve, and I am just so proud of the work that I saw done in committee and the comments I heard here tonight that share with the public how it's really hard to re-engineer something that's been engineered for a different reason. So great job. I am very excited about the street standards coming forward because I think this is probably some of the best conversations I've heard in years about how we are going to adapt, adopt, construct, amend, modify, whatever. So great job. Wonderful job. I was going to see if there are no more questions. Would Councilmember Ray like to make a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025
Dash 10.
Adopting the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvement Project Study Report.
Second?
Thank you both. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, gosh. Are there any comments? You've already had questions. Okay, Councilmember Hall, and then we'll see who else.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna I just wanted to say a few words because I was on the committee when we talked about the two alternatives previously before the lower-cost alternative. Thanks again for all of everyone's work who was part of this project. We did talk about it a lot. I just wanted to say it was at the committee that three of us had, it was difficult to accept not having an uphill bike lane. It was very difficult, especially because we just updated or we had just talked about the mobility action plan. Actually, that was the night we had christened it MAP, I think. And there was a new or there was a policy in there that said we would work to raise level of service in certain areas, and Squawk Mountain is one of those. They're a level of service four, which I think is like the strong and fearless bikers or something like that. And the policy is to try to move up to LOS3, right, Level of Service Three. So it was kind of at odds, but TAB had talked about it, and we had talked about it, and we've talked about it a little bit tonight. There's the cost element, there's the number of trees. I think it was 70, at least that's what I wrote in my notes, that 70 trees would have to be cut down. There's just limited right-of-way space and right-of-way impacts. And then the other thing, of course, was you have to really be that biker that is okay going up a hill like this. So given all of that, I'm happy moving forward with the direction that we have and with all the work that we have, and just thanks again to staff.
Thank you. Additional comments? Not seeing any, but I will reread the motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2025-10, adopting the Squawk Mountain Non-Motorized Improvements Project Study Report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 7 and 0. Thank you. Thank you, John, for the presentation and for bringing your team. The next two agenda items are going to be presented jointly, and they are AB 8986, the 2023-24 Budget Reauthorizations, and AB 9016, the first 2025-26 Budget Amendment. And the action before you this evening is to adopt the ordinance and welcome Jennifer Raine, our Acting Finance Director. Thanks for coming.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today regarding the reauthorizations and proposed amendments to our city biennial budget. Tonight, we're asking for the city council's approval on two key action items. First, to reauthorize certain funds that were originally budgeted in the 2023-24 biennium so they can be used in the 2025-26 biennium. And second, to adopt the proposed ordinance that formally amends the 2025-26 adopted budget to reflect these changes. Okay. We have some important distinctions regarding reauthorizations. These are not new funds. We're simply continuing the use of unspent, previously approved funds. This step is important because it helps us keep existing projects and services on track without any disruptions. It applies to key initiatives, things like infrastructure improvements, capital projects, and important community programs. And each reauthorization has been carefully reviewed to make sure it still aligns with our city goals and current needs. This is something we do on a regular basis as part of our annual budget housekeeping process. When we look at budget reauthorizations, department staff are asked to provide When we look at budget reauthorizations, department staff are asked to provide clear reason for why they're requesting to carry over unspent funds from the 2023-24 biennium into the current 2025-26 budget. We provide the following reauthorization rationale buckets, so there's consistency and transparency in the process. These rationales include limited staff capacity, supply chain delays, or external factors outside of the city's control. Some projects are also multi-year by design, or the work may have been intentionally deferred to the current biennium. As we reviewed the reauthorization requests from departments, we found that the vast majority, about 87%, were tied to multi-year projects. These are efforts that were always intended to span more than one budget cycle, so the reauthorization simply allows the work to continue. In addition to that, we saw a smaller number of requests due to external factors, things like external partner delays or ongoing supply chain issues that push timelines back. Now, let's take a closer look at the financial impact of these reauthorization requests. What does this mean for our fund balance? If the administration's reauthorization recommendations are approved, we're looking at a decrease of about $30.7 million. That's the result of carrying forward appropriation authority from the 2023-24 period into the new biennium. To provide additional context on the requested reauthorizations, we've broken down the expenditures by fund to highlight their comparative impact. The Capital Projects Fund is most significantly impacted, accounting for 75% of the total reauthorization requests. This is expected as many capital projects are multi-year in nature and span multiple fiscal years and biennial budget cycles. Now, moving on to our next proposal, the first budget amendment for the 2025-26 biennium. This budget amendment includes five specific requests, which fall into three main categories. First is previously-approved request. These are items that the city council has approved in concept through earlier agenda bills. In this amendment, we have three requests that fall into this category. Next, our budget corrections. These are technical fixes to the 2025-26 adopted budget, usually small errors or updates that come to light after the budget is, has been finalized. In this case, there are no corrections included in this amendment. And finally, budget adjustments. These are for new projects or activities that weren't previously anticipated when the 2025-26 budget was adopted. This amendment includes two of these adjustments. So let's take a closer look at the five requests that are included in this budget amendment, starting with the previously-approved requests. Item one is the Hillside Park Improvements Project. Item two, Highwood and Westside Reservoir Retrofits. Item three, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC, funding. Next, the budget adjustments, which reflect newer modified priorities. Item number four, purchase of an electric mower. Item number five, facilities, project fund realignments. As mentioned before, there are no budget correction items in this amendment. To be clear, all of these projects are already funded within the Capital Projects Fund. This amendment simply redistributes existing appropriations. So looking at the table here, we've pulled together all five proposals included in this amendment to the 2025-26 biennium budget. If approved, these adjustments would increase total budgeted revenues by about $522,000, specifically in the Capital Projects Fund and the Fleet Fund. On the spending side, total expenditures across all funds shown would go up by $961,000. When we put it all together, the net effect of the proposed changes is a $439,000 decrease to the overall fund balances. And just to highlight one detail, the general fund would see a $4,000 reduction to its fund balance as part of that total. So I'd like to thank Budget Manager Susie Moncel and staff across the departments for all their work and attention to detail throughout this process. Their efforts are essential to ensuring we manage city resources responsibly while maintaining, remaining responsive to the evolving needs of our community. The administration recommends that the city council adopt the ordinance approving the 2023-24 budget reauthorizations and the 2025-26 budget amendments as presented this evening. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. That's what you wanted, write a financial presentation at the end of the night. Well done, Jennifer, very well done. Let's go with council questions. Wow, lots going up. We'll go council president, councilmember Jiang, councilmember Ray.
Thank you. Jennifer, the memo mentions $8.4 million of reauthorizations requested for grant-supported projects where we have not yet received the grant revenues. How are we approaching these projects and spending authority? And if we give the authority again now, and the grant doesn't come through, how will we approach that?
That's a great question. In general, most, most of the time, grants are reimbursed, so they're not, revenue is not received until the money is spent, and then we request to have it covered back. I'd have to look specifically at the projects that are associated with those grants to see what the, I guess, Plan B is, if, if grant funding is not coming through for those. But I believe if they're included, that there's full faith that they are approved and just haven't spent the money in order to claim the reimbursement for them yet.
Can I ask the same question to the city administrator, since we have had some conversations about grant funding and whether or not it's coming through, what our approach is?
So in the old days, back three, four months ago, when the state or federal government awarded you a grant, you had a grant. That, those days have changed. Our staff is very diligently working with representatives of the various departments, federal departments that are issuing the grants. Some of it comes through organizations like the Puget Sound Regional Council. And what you see tonight is our best understanding of the current status of things. Local governments all over America are having these same conversations. Will you get reimbursed for spending that you're doing? All we can say is we are collecting the best information on a weekly basis from our partners, working with other agencies, and we hope that we will not be left holding the bag. Can I give you 100% certainty of that? No. But we're being very thoughtful. It is something we're talking about on a regular basis. And if we hear something that indicates that we're not going to be receiving, or there's some question, we will immediately take actions to stop spending. So.
So toward that idea, if we reauthorize this spending, but the administration heard later that the grants were at risk, you would immediately not spend that money if it had not been done in the future?
Absolutely. I mean, will, will we get to the point where we'll be so far along in a project?
Yes.
That we might have to come back to the council and say, we're not going to get any more money, but we're 90% done, 80% done, looking for other options. That may very well be the case.
Yeah.
But it is uncharted territory for all of us. Again, the days of being awarded a grant and receiving the dollars, that certainty seems to be gone, at least for the moment.
And just to add on to City Administrator Bob Kowits's comments, we were one of the first cities at his direction early on into this new administration to assess risk. So assessing the risk of what funding we may or may not be getting has been like a top priority. I think they've taken a very conservative approach, which I'm very supportive of, don't like surprises. So I'm very proud of his work early on, and Jennifer's, to start identifying where we have risk and how we will manage it, so that we don't end up in the situation that council president just talked about.
Okay. So I know we faced some financial difficulties lately, including the $3.8 million in costs not recovered from November's bomb cyclone. How are we kind of considering any need to reduce our expenses? And particularly, I'm looking at things like the capital projects, where, okay, yes, this is reauthorization, and some of those are projects that are fairly far along, but some of them are very early. The money just didn't get spent last year, and so the project's still very new. Are we looking at making any adjustments? And again, that might go to city administrator, I, you know, toward that idea. But if we reauthorize at this point, is there still an opportunity to come back and kind of look at areas where we might need to cut back?
Council president, members of the council, absolutely. We will be here next week, and we will be talking about this in a little bit more detail. The challenge is that some of this other money for projects that haven't gotten underway were allocated for specific purposes. So we do not have leverage in many cases to shift those dollars around. Again, this is something that none of us have ever encountered before, with the federal government, you know, sort of picking and choosing agencies, projects. And we're going to be as diligent as we can. I wish I could be more precise, but I can't.
Thank you. Councilmember Jiang.
Thank you. One question I had was, so you mentioned that, like, 75% of the funds that were reauthorized, it's because it's a multi-year project. So I'm curious, like, is that something where in the beginning of the project, we thought that it would all be accomplished by the end of 2024, but then the project timeline stretched longer? Or like, is there any, you know, because I, I would imagine that we would want to try to accurately account for those to the extent possible. So I'm, I'm just curious, like, where that comes out, especially because, you know, $8 million is not an insignificant amount to be happening later than originally planned.
Sure. So I think you're probably referencing back to this, this slide here, or maybe possibly this one, the one that's, the amounts requested by a reauthorization rationale?
Yes, that one.
Gotcha. So I believe, you know, without looking at all the specific details of the very long list that was provided in the staff report, they were intended to be multi-year projects, that they would span over many years, you know, one or more. So that's just, you know, carrying over the reauthorization, what was approved in a previous year, so that they can finish and complete the project. Anything that's kind of an external, or I guess, another rationale for the reason why it's requested to reauthorize are the other buckets that we provided as, as a listing for them. So if they, you know, indicated it was a multi-year project, I, we believe that it's intended to be that way.
I guess my question is, then, if it was intended to be a multi-year project, then why would it not have been in the original 25 to 26 budget if we knew that it was going to take longer?
I believe it's probably because it wasn't completed at that time, and they needed it to roll over.
Councilmember Jiang, members of the council, the answer to that question's a little bit more complicated. Largely, it's because Issaquah has budgeted its capital projects this way for a very long time. Other communities approach things a little bit differently, where multi-year projects often will have phases, and so the phases are allocated with an idea that they're accomplished within a shorter period of time, and then you add up the various phases to a project, and then you get a full project. That's not been how Issaquah has budgeted its capital projects. Is how we do it right or wrong, no. How other communities do it right or wrong, no. And it's certainly something we can continue to talk about as we talk about capital budgeting moving forward. But this is, this has been a practice in this community for some time.
Thanks, that's super helpful. And I think, Councilmember Ray, next?
Thank you. Can you go back to the last table that you put up there? Because I'm not 100% sure that I understand it. Matter of fact, I'm 100% sure I don't understand it. So are, the far-right column is a change in our, our projected ending fund balance at the end of this year or this biennium with these adjustments? Is that, what, what is that number?
That's, that's the, that's the impact that will be, the, the net impact to fund balance with this approval. It's the combination of the increase in revenues and the increase in expenditures, and the difference is the negative effect on fund balance, expected ending fund balance.
But if we're just reallocating, bear with me, I'm just trying to understand. If we're just reallocating funds that we didn't spend last year, shouldn't the fund balance, ending fund balance of last year been bumped up, so that this would bump it down and we'd net out to zero? Because this looks like we're, we're decreasing overall available funds by $440,000.
Correct. So this is, this is where we're talking two different things. The first part of the presentation was reauthorization. So that scenario that you said, you know, we underspent in the previous year, and now we're planning on respending in the current year, this is the ordinances, or the agenda bills that have been previously approved, and the net effect of the fund balance that that will have on the 25-26 biennium budget.
Okay, I'm going to play back what I think you said.
Okay.
These weren't funded yet, but the agenda bills that authorized them were approved, and this is the funding to fund what we already said we'd do?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Made sense to you, but maybe not people watching.
Well, no, didn't make sense, but it does now, it's all good.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Were there any other questions? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Hall.
Just a really quick one, and it, it's not as part of the, the presentation, but has there been a change to our grant funding support of local community nonprofit organizations like the, like we had called it out, I think, in the budget, like, so there was like Friends of Lakes Mamish, like the different kind of non-human service organizations? Because I think it was originally no change in '25, and then a 12% decrease in '26. Has that changed at all?
Wally, yeah, do you want to, sorry, do you want to go back to the evolving conversations that happened around the funding for nonprofits during the budget phase?
Oh, and that's totally fine, if that can just be an ask for information later, too.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there.
There's nothing before you that is different than the approved budget.
Okay, thanks.
Great, good, good question. Any other questions? Thank you, Jennifer. At this time, would you like to make a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 3090, amending the 2025-26 budget as set forth in ordinance number 3083 concerning revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for various funds.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries 7 to 0. Thank you for your thoughtful questions. We are going to move on to committee and regional reports, and Councilmember Jiang, you are up.
Great, thank you, Mayor Pauli. So I have two reports run, one from the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee meeting, and one from the East Side Transportation Partnership meeting. So the Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, April 9, from 7 to 9 p.m. They discussed a couple different items. So the first one was an update on the park levy. So the overall amount was decreased slightly, the amount to cities was increased slightly. Overall, SCA felt like there should have been more of a change on both of those. However, the executive director of SCA did mention, you know, folks are reaching out to SCA asking for their opinion on this change, which kind of, you know, signifies that SCA is becoming more, you know, kind of finding their voice again, which folks at SCA are very happy about. There was also an update from the state legislature. So basically, they said the governor and legislature can't agree on the budget at all, very likely to go to special session. But the current budget does include raising the property tax increase cap to 3%, which is something that our mayor, Mayor Pauli, has testified on. Another thing that was presented was this proposal on the wastewater rates, which we've talked about a bit on council. So King County staff presented on the wastewater rates proposal, which include rate increases of, annual rate increases of 12 and a half to 13 and a half per year over the next five years. So that's very significant, almost doubling over the next five years. Generally, you know, folks were not happy about the proposed rate increases, and were very concerned about affordability. Kirkland is proposing a regional utilities affordability summit to discuss this issue, which would convene all the mayors potentially early next year, so that, you know, because this is a pretty significant issue. So stay tuned there. And then And then lastly, the SCA staff presented a survey of SCA members about SCA and the PIC. And generally, it seems like members, you know, wanted PIC to have a greater regional impact, and hopefully, we're getting there with things like the park levy and providing input on the wastewater rates and all that kind of stuff. So the Eastside Transportation Partnership, there was a meeting on Friday, April 11th, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. The Sound Transit staff presented about the downtown Redmond and Marymore Village Light Rail Station grand opening party on May 10th. There'll be a ribbon cutting, 11 something, and then the first train will be at noon. There will be community events at the news stations until 4:00 p.m. They did not talk about this, but apparently, there's a Sound Transit merch store where you can buy puzzles and merch about the new Redmond Light Rail Station. So that, you know, made me excited for when, in Issaquah, we might have those in the future. And then King County Metro presented about the plan for fair inspection and enforcement. So fair inspection started on March 31st, and written warnings and citations will start on May 31st. So they had significant community engagement with the Equity Work Group, which provided recommendations on leading with fair education and alternative resolutions for citations, and especially, you know, educating folks on reduced fare products for low-income people. And there's, there's going to be 30 fair enforcement officers working in teams of two, and the operators, bus drivers, are not responsible for fair enforcement.
Thank you, councilmember Jane. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. The Mobility and Infrastructure Committee did not meet in April. Our April 8th meeting was canceled. Our next meeting is May 14th. The agenda has not been set yet. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet on May 3rd, oh, May 5th, sorry. And that is at 2:00 p.m. at the Spring Hill Suite. Agenda has not been set, but we will be discussing possibly trying to recruit another alternate board member that is a person that runs Verbos and other B&amp;Bs to widen the aperture and give us different views on how we're spending and how we're using those funds. I'll give you an update if we significantly, if we are lucky enough to get a new member for that alternate position. Cascade Water Alliance, the board meeting is April 23rd. The Public Affairs Committee for May 7th has been canceled. And last Friday, I, as liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, met with the board there, and they wanted me to convey that Sammendays is coming, if you didn't know. And that, on the good side of things, they've opened the registration for vendors for October, for prior vendors, if you did Sammendays last year. And they had over 80% retention in their signups again, and it's still open for a little bit longer. So just a great testament to the fact that people really love coming to the festival and selling their wares and taking part in our community activity there. And they wanted me to put out a general request for volunteers. As you know, Sammendays is only possible by the strength of our volunteers in town. So if you're interested, reach out to the Chamber of Commerce. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thanks. I made all my reports at the last council meeting, but I'll just say the Eastside Fire and Rescue Annual Report for 2024 has been published. Thank you, council president Walsh, for bringing a physical copy. So if you'd like to see that, maybe she'll just pass it down real quick. And then I'll also just say, last week, Chief Lane and I were able to go, we took a tour of Norcom, and were able to pass out some goodie bags and gift certificates from everyone in recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. They were very appreciative. I was also blown away by the outfit that they have there and have gotten assurances that if anyone here would like a tour of Norcom, just let me know, and I can put you in touch with them, or I'm sure staff could as well here. But anyways, I was just really, it was very interesting, and I'll leave it at that. That concludes my report.
Thanks. Councilmember Ray?
No reports this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Zhang gave a great overview of the PIC meeting, but I want to add just a couple of quick things. The situation with the Wastewater Treatment Division, you know, it was presented that, well, one of the reasons why we need to have these really usurious increases is because of deferred maintenance. But one of the things is, over the last five years, there was an annualized increase of 5.2% annually during a time when inflation only went up by about 4% annually. So they've already been robustly increasing costs back to the public. And then the annualized rate over the next eight years is 11% per year, per annum. So, you know, the proposed or projected. And so while the regional summit is a good idea, the size of these increases suggest a more fundamental problem. It's just, it's not, you can't get, you know, 200%, 200, or, sorry, 130% increase over that amount of time unless something is really seriously out of whack. So that forbodes challenges. I guess that's all I need to add on SCA PIC. But I will say that the tomorrow's Services, Safety, and Parks meeting is canceled. Thank you.
Thanks. Deputy Council President?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. On April 16th, I attended the Regional Transit Committee and the General Manager report, again, 278,000 daily rides, average daily rides in March of 2025. And that is a great increase year over year. So again, Metro is coming back slowly but surely. That is not close to the ridership that they had pre-pandemic still, but they are increasing slowly but surely. They were around 400,000 daily rides average pre-pandemic, so there's still a ways to go. We did have an excellent report on safety. The Metro is required by the federal government to submit a safety and security report annually, and they gave us a, what they called a 30,000-foot look at some of the findings that they've, that they've come up with. So there were five areas that we got reports on. Transit worker assaults. In 2023, they had an average of 6.5 per month, and 2024, 7, so a slight increase. Passengers disturbances in 2023, 34 per month, in 2024, 35, so again, a slight increase. Drug use on the bus, 103 average in 20, per month in 2023. In 2024, 56.5, so they cut it nearly in half. So that was really good news. However, harassment and threats was 44 average per month in 2023 and 67 in 2024. They did note that harassment and threats is not necessarily on the bus. This is bus stops, transit centers, those kinds of things. And in fact, most of those occurred not on the bus, but in those areas. And so you've seen this in the Seattle Times, where they're cracking down on places where there are notorious numbers of harassments and assaults happening, but still an ongoing problem. And then there is a category called sleeper or non-destinational rider. This is people, homeless people, who will get on the bus late at night on the routes that run all night long, and that is their shelter. And so in 2023, there were 96 per month average, 2024, unfortunately, 117. So it's going up. So, yeah, there was a lot of discussion about those numbers and what Metro's doing, which we've reported on earlier. They are significantly increasing their transit police presence, for example. And they were happy to report that they are fully staffed in their transit police at this point. So at any rate, I will send you, I have an email that was sent to us. I will forward that to you so you can look at those numbers yourself. And then I went to the Board of Health meeting on April 17th. Again, that is a packed agenda that they have every month. So it was a three-hour meeting, and I won't go over all of the reports that we received, but I would like to mention, we passed a resolution honoring Mary Solecki, who died on April 7th. Mary was, served as Washington State's Secretary of Health for 14 years under three different governors. She was a national leader in reducing smoking, increasing childhood vaccination rates, promoting emergency preparedness, and leading Washington public health efforts during the HIV and swine flu epidemics. And I was happy to note, she lived in Colville, Washington, which is a small city outside of Spokane. And when she was offered the job to be Secretary of Health, she said, I will take it if I can live in Colville and stay there. And she did. And, yeah, we just heard comment after comment about what a wonderful person she was. And so I just wanted to recognize her here as well. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. Just a short report. The King County Affordable Housing Committee and the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board both have their next meetings on May 1st, and no agendas have been released.
Thank you. And the next item is the mayor's report. There is not an executive session this evening. 2025 Board and Commission Recruitment. Tonight's consent calendar had AB 8965 outlining my appointments to open and expiring seats on our boards and commissions. Consistent with our council's policy, these appointments allow a broad array of community participation. We are proud to have 103 current members across our 14 boards and commissions, and this recruitment welcomes 30 new members and 20 returning members. The agenda bill also confirms seven appointments to the short-term 4th of July commission, and we continue to recruit for the two remaining seats on this commission. I just want to thank everybody who applied to serve, those appointed, those departing. The recommendations that came forward from the interview panels was no easy task because it was a highly competitive pool again. I want to thank everyone who participated with their willingness to serve our Issaquah community. This city will be hosting the Third Sustainability Fair on Saturday, April 26th. That is this Saturday at Pickering Barn in partnership with our farmer's market. We'll have a, we'll have resource booths and activities for all ages. Please come and join us for classes on alternative cleaning products, leather and textile repair, sock mending, my favorite, and participate in a Nature City Challenge. Every year, the Sustainability Fair is growing. Lastly, and super important, Issaquah Farmer's Market is coming back. It returns May 3rd. So following the Sustainability Fair, the 2025 Issaquah Farmer's Market season will officially start on May 3rd. Local farmers will have a wide selection of spring produce and flowers available at the Pickering Barn. The Farmer's Market runs every Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00, and so we hope to see you all there. Going to move now to Good of the Order and open it up for any council items. I do have a couple of dates to share. Deputy Council President?
I just wanted to make sure that you saw that I forwarded an invitation to the council to attend Vishu, which is a Hindu celebration of the New Year and spring, which takes place in certain provinces of India. It's being held this coming Sunday, April 27th, from 12:00 noon until 4:00 p.m. at Issaquah Middle School. I attended last year. It is a delightful event. There is not a program. It is a meal, and it is a fabulous meal. And it's just an opportunity to meet and get to know members of the Southeast Asian community here in Issaquah. And you will be warmly welcomed. If you look at my invitation, there is a link to a registration. They would like us to register before we go. So please do that, but otherwise, I would really encourage everybody to attend. Thanks.
Great. Any other council items before I do dates? I am just going to add one quick item in that I know it is very hard for you all to be here tonight. I know that we had a moment of silence for our senator who has passed, and I know many of you have many thoughts to share. And today is a very, very tough day for you all, and in particular, for councilmember Perry and the family. But we will be hosting an event when we can make sure that the family is able to attend to allow you all to say the things that I know are in your heart and in your minds and that you would love to share. So thank you for being here tonight. I know it's really tough for you all. A couple of upcoming meetings. On Monday, April 28th, the City Council Committee of the Whole has a couple of anticipated items, sorry, an anticipated item, and it's the State Legislative Update, taxing authority and other revenue sources from the windstorm follow-up. And on Monday, May 5th, is the regular city council meeting. And we're asking council members who can arrive to arrive at 5:00 p.m. on May 5th here at City Hall. Our Parks Director will then be chauffeuring you up to Hillside Park reopening celebration on Squawk Mountain. This is a neighborhood celebration, and parking will be very, very limited. It's a walk-in park for the most part. You'll be driven back to the council chambers at 6:30 p.m. We will have a light dinner for you before the 7:00 p.m. meeting. The anticipated items include the Social and Community Connection Initiatives 2025, Transit Oriented Development Opportunity Center Housing Cooperation Agreement, City Council Vacancy Process, Amendments to the City Council Rules of Procedure. And there is no executive session this evening, so unfortunately, while it is only 9:33 p.m. instead of 1:30 a.m., I will be adjourn, sorry, not even 9:33, 9:28 p.m. I will be adjourning the meeting four hours early for your convenience. Can you imagine 1:30 in the morning multiple times?